All right, seems like a majority of folks have already taken their seats. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening. I know it's echoing here, but we gotta get a little more energy. Good evening, good evening. All right, we'll take that one. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jai Singletary. I'm a policy analyst in the office of Council President Pro Tem Tate. We want to thank everyone joining in person and online via Zoom for joining us for our second animal keeper ordinance meeting, community meeting. This is our second go around. We're taking the show on the road. We were first at Crowell Recreation Center in June. I see some familiar faces, and now I see some new faces now that we are in District Four within the Samaritan Center campus. So we want to give definitely a shout out to Councilmember Johnson, being in her district and being so gracious enough to let us come and have a community meeting here. So tonight, and without further to do, as we talk about animal keeping and animal keeping ordinance that's on the horizon, and we need your help, I'd like to introduce District One Council President Pro Tem, James Tate. Give him a round of applause, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So again, thank you all for showing up and being here and participating in this. What I feel and many feel is a very important ordinance. It's a little different than what, you know, you typically see in here in the city of Detroit, but it's one that I believe will help provide the assistance that many of our residents currently need, all right? I'm not gonna, we're not gonna have a whole lot of talk. I'm not gonna say too much. Before I sit down, though, I want to bring up, because we're in District Four. I want to bring up Gary from District Four, Chief of Staff, to Member Johnson. Y'all give him a round of applause, please. Don't act like you didn't know him. Give you a couple of words, because we're in your district. We want to thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tate. As he mentioned, I'm Gary Gray. Went to Channel Elementary School. Some of you know about Channel Elementary School down here on Shoemaker. I grew, so did Councilwoman Johnson, by the way. She went 25 years after I did. So I'm an East Sider. I used to swim over here. I'm an urban farmer. I don't, I haven't done bees or chickens or goats or anything like that, but I'm all ears. As a matter of fact, Ms. Sarah Elbohe helped me get my lots. She may not know it, but I'm a USDA farm now. So I'm very interested in this kind of work. And I'm sure I'm gonna learn something and hopefully be able to help inform Councilmember Johnson's decision on where she goes with this. So that's all I have to welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. So we're here. This is the second of three planned scheduled workshops to educate the community about what, you know, we technically call animal husbandry, but we've changed the name of the ordinance to animal keeping. It's a little easier for folks to understand, and it really kind of puts in the wording of the ordinance what it does. Beekeepers, they keep bees, right? So animal keeping. We want to make sure that folks have the real information on what we're looking to propose. We've been working on this ordinance for about 10 years or so now. And in that time, we have seen the city of Detroit become a lot more receptive to the idea of animal keeping. How do I know that's true? Well, there's a number of former vacant lots that have been acquired by residents in the city of Detroit who now have bee hives all across the city of Detroit. Whether you talk about Detroiters who've been here for 20, 30-plus years, you talk about new Detroiters, same thing, all across the board. You're seeing bee hives. And you'll hear a little bit more about why that's important to ensure that our bee population is upheld and actually increased. We also have on the, within the ordinance, chickens. Not a whole lot of chickens just yet. We're still working through it. We'll give you the actual amount. It's coming up. But then also ducks. In the past, we had goats and rabbits as well. Ms. Evelyn King, who was part of the team, she's now with planning. She knows all about the ducks, the goats, and the chickens. But we've pivoted away from the chick, from the goats and the rabbits based upon the feedback that we got from the community. So without further ado, I don't want to take up again too much more time. Ms. Renee Wallace, if you can give it up for her. She has, is doing a tremendous job. Y'all give it up for Ms. Renee Wallace and her team. I think it's supposed to be next, right? Okay, all right, all right. And before we go further, also, y'all, we always give a shout out, at least in District One, and I think you do it over here in D4 as well. Y'all give a shout out to our police department. They put their lives on the line all the time on behalf of all of us. So we appreciate you for being here. Thank you. Ms. Wallace.
All right, good day, everyone. You guys look beautiful. Can y'all give yourselves a little bit of something? It's late in the day, y'all out here. As Councilmember said, my name is Renee V. Wallace, and I'll be part of a team effort this evening to give you some background information on how we got here, some of the things that are important as we move forward. So I represent two organizations, Doers Edge and Food Plus Detroit, and have had the pleasure of being involved in this work for some time now. And so we really are holding this space, it's for you. As Councilmember said, it's an opportunity for you to talk about what matters to you. So we're gonna share a little background first, and then we'll have some time to have some conversation with you and see where we land. How's that sound? Is that what you were expecting? Okay, cool beans. I'm gonna ask Kamani Jeffrey to come up as well. We're tag teaming on this today and just introduce himself.
Thank you. How is everybody doing tonight? That's great. So I think, want to thank President Pro Tem in his office for setting this up. Want to thank Ms. Renee V. Wallace for being here. My name is Kamani Jeffrey. I'm with the City Planning Commission. So we're the staff of the commission and the city council. And tonight, we're here to talk about animal keeping. So what is it that we're here to discuss? We're here to discuss something that's happening all around the city where people are currently keeping animals. And when we talk about animals, we're not just talking about pets. We're talking about livestock animals. So here you see a picture of chickens and ducks. This is a representation of some of the animals that people are keeping across the city. Animals are currently kept in all different types of neighborhoods. There's not one specific type of neighborhood that they're being kept in. They're being kept in traditional neighborhoods, mixed-use neighborhoods, anything from stable to high vacancy neighborhoods. And so we want to make sure that that's clear, that this is happening all across the city, because at one point in time, people asked, "Why don't you do a pilot?" Well, there's really no fair way to do a pilot because people across the city are currently doing this. This is just a representation from Indian Village of ducks being kept in the backyard and the shelter space that you can see in the back. Here's a representation from mid-Detroit area where this is an enclosure space that animals are being kept. Even here, you can see that, you know, ducks are being kept, and many times, there may be animals being kept next door to you, and you may not even know it because it's being done so well in some cases. And so this is also a picture of chickens being kept in someone's garage. They made a home for the chickens in the garage. Here we have another type of shelter space for chickens and also honeybees. I know this is one that raises everybody's antennas, no pun intended, but honeybees are also being kept. And I want to make the distinction that honeybees are different from other insects such as wasps. The reason, or some of the things that you can see as being the difference between honeybees is that honeybees are gentle and rarely sting versus wasps that may be much more aggressive. They pollinate our plants. So you might ask, "Why people might want to keep them?" One, they're a pollinator, so they help the reproduction cycle for plants that produce fruit. While wasps might be more aggressive and sting, honeybees produce honey, hence the name. And so this is, you may have seen this, you may have not even noticed, but you might have seen this in someone's yard. And this is how honeybees are currently being kept in yards all across the city. We have, I believe we have in the house, Detroit Hives, the nonprofit that are keeping honeybees here. If you want to, let's give a round of applause for them here. It's amazing. We didn't even know they would be in attendance, so it was just coincidence. And then this is just a representation of what that might look like on a typical lot where you have what they call a fly wall barrier to keep or separate the bees from your adjacent or neighboring property. So how we define animal keeping, or what some people may call animal husbandry, currently in our draft ordinance is the keeping of certain urban farm animals and domestic honeybees for personal consumption or utilization of agricultural products such as eggs, meat, or honey. So these are the animals, as President Pro Tem just mentioned. These are the animals that we're currently projecting as being in the ordinance, chickens, ducks, and then also honeybees. And then we have another opportunity for educational activities. So those would be the more rare instances for things, maybe somebody might want to start an equestrian farm. And so we're leaving a caveat where people could have the potential of a process for that to be established with a lot of review before that could be approved. And so we want to reiterate what is being proposed. Again, what's being proposed is the legalizing of animal keeping in the city of Detroit. Those are including chickens, ducks, and honeybees. That's it. We want to tell you what's not being proposed. What's not being proposed are goats and sheep, as President Pro Tem mentioned. That was once considered, but after hearing from the community, we heard feedback, and so those were removed. So the community input does have an impact, so we just want to highlight that. What's not being proposed are turkeys, roosters, because we obviously don't want to have a lot of noise. Pigs and cattle are not being considered. Wasps, hornets, and other aggressive insects are not being considered. We're not looking at mass animal production farming, and we're not looking at farm animals as pets. They're specifically for the production of the products that they produce. So why, why do people want to keep these animals? Again, during the COVID-19 era, we saw that COVID exposed the frailties and the fragilities that we have in our food ecosystem. We saw many meat processing plants all around the country. There was a big scare at one point that we might not even be able to feed the country because those plants were closing down because they couldn't operate with the lack of staff. We've seen that plants have burned down in recent months and years. So we see that our food systems are already fragile, and so the need for more localized food is essential. We also see price inflation and food insecurity where we see egg, the price of eggs have shot up over 70%. The price of chicken, if you're like me, I used to buy a pack of wings for five bucks, and now they're like 12 to 15 bucks. So my family has changed our eating habits. We might eat legs instead of wings. So you see that the food systems are very fragile as they currently exist. And so again, we're talking about livestock or animal keeping for the purpose of the food products that they produce. And so chickens can produce up to 300 or more eggs per year, chickens and ducks. We're looking at chickens and ducks for the meat that they provide, meat chickens. We're looking at honeybees, obviously, for the honey that they produce. And then also for that special category that we mentioned, the educational piece where children and others in the community can be educated on these different animals and what they provide. And so this is just a picture from a slaughterhouse that we went to that shows how it could go from yard to neatly packaged food products in a very short amount of time. There's also economic opportunities for things such as slaughter, things such as animal bedding, houses for the, shelter spaces for the animals. And this is a real important slide right here. I'm sorry, my clicker is acting a little crazy. But this is a real important slide because I want you to know that this is not the first time this is being done. This is happening all across the country and has been, there's ordinances that have been adopted in cities from the West Coast to the East Coast, cities from San Francisco to Oakland, all the way to New York, one of the densest places in the world. If they can do it there, we know that we can do it here in an effective and safe way. And so also, if you look at Michigan, these are all of the cities in Michigan that already have adopted animal husbandry ordinances, everywhere from Ann Arbor to Chelsea to East Lansing, Lathrop Village, Livonia, and the list goes on. So this is not an experiment. This has been done in many places all around the country and even in Michigan. And Ms. Renee is going to tell us the how.
Yeah, so, so this conversation began a while back. How many of you were involved in our effort to establish the Urban Ag Ordinance? Yeah, so I see some hands in the room. Initially, this was a part of that work. So when we say it's been 10 years, it's been 10 years. And so we've been taking a very, very intentional approach to this. The approach of doing the policy was intended to be participatory. So we look at who are all the stakeholders? Who has a voice in this? Who has a role in helping carry this out? So here you see, from the city standpoint, all the key stakeholders within the city are a part of an interdepartmental work group. So we, you have the city council members, you have the commission, you have animal care and control, the law department, planning, development, and B.C. So when you think about who's gonna be responsible for carrying these kinds of things out, all of these folks have, their voices have been engaged and given input, you know, in the process. And then stakeholders like yourselves, you know? We talk to everyday citizens. We're all part of that, me too. We also talk to the animal keepers as well as folks who have an opposition to this. And it was really important to hear everybody's voices because we learn different things from everyone. So the conversation didn't begin today. And then there are external partners like myself, Food Plus Detroit, the Food Policy Council. We have a member of the Food Policy Council here, Amy. You want to wave at folks. They've been involved. U of D's Design Center was engaged in our early research when we were looking at, when we first started doing this work, how do you center the animals and their welfare? How do you center the welfare of us as residents in our homes? And then also the animal keeper. So they really helped us do some of that early research. We talked to M.D.A.R., who is responsible for all things agriculture in the state of Michigan. You know, they were the ones that gave us the recent insight about what was happening with the meat processing all around the country. Because we thought, "Well, wow, we don't have it in Detroit." It was like, "Well, we have trouble all over the United States right now with that." So they gave us a broader perspective because sometimes people think, "Oh, that's just Detroit." Well, no, it's not just Detroit. It's the whole country, as well as MSU Extension. And so as I said in that, we wanted to make sure we looked at things in terms of how we protect the animals, how do we protect us as homeowners? How do we make sure that we have mechanisms to, to hold true to the best ways, you know, of doing this work? Next slide. And how do we do that? We did it a number of different ways. So just like we're having this series of conversations, we had a series of conversations back in 2015 and 2016. And you know what's amazing about it? Some of the same things that we're talking about today, when I walk here and I look at the notes and the post-its, are the things that people are concerned about. So there's not a whole lot of new things. So I think what you'll hear today is the information we're providing was based upon that feedback. And so as we pick up new things, we'll add that. So there were a few things that came up. But for the most part, these listening sessions, we also had focus groups with people who took care of animals, and we learned a lot of stuff about what to do and what not to do from the animal keepers. Like, "Hey, you want to make sure you really learn how to do this well?" They told us that. And we also talked with people and had focus group with folks who did not want to see it happen. And we got to hear exactly what those concerns are. So we could consider that when we talk about how does the policy get written? It gets informed by everybody's voice. And we also hung out at festivals and summits and places where people hung out just trying to have fun. We were like, "But you still eat, right? So let's hear what you have to say, you know, about this." So those are some of the things that we did for public engagement. Catherine Lynch Underwood, many of you probably know Catherine. She helped us move that whole Urban Ag Ordinance forward and has done amazing work in this city around our food systems. So she helped lead this work when we first did that first round. And much like what you see today where we had the gallery and an opportunity for you to weigh in about your perspectives on it, we did that work then. Next. And we also listened. So some of the reasons when people talk about why do they want animals, you know? People talked about their ability to put food on their tables themselves. You know, we all have choices. You can go over here to the store and buy it. Some folks like raising their own and being able to put food on the table to feed their families and also to share, you know, with their, with their neighbors. People talked about their neighbors and the relationships. Now you're gonna see the flip side of that on the next one, too, because some people talked about how it helped build community with their neighbors. But some folks said, "Well, hey, that ain't exactly happening in my neighborhood." So you get to hear both sides of that. People talked about the benefit to their children, and some of us, too, who don't really know how food gets to our table and recognizing the importance of that particularly at this stage. And then those who are saying they have concerns or are opposed to it, they talked about wanting to know what was going on. It's like, "Could I at least know? Would somebody tell me that next door you have bees? Or that you have chickens?" Because as Kamani said, people that are doing it well, you might not even know what's happening, but you, people want to know. You know, they want to have good relationships with the folks that are caring. You know, some people aren't having the best relationships. So we know that neighbor relations is a big part of this, and we're gonna need to pay attention to that, you know, as we're moving this forward. Some folks have amazing relationships with their neighbors and some are not. But those are some of the things that people talk to us about. Pay attention to the medical situation. If your neighbor has allergies and they can't deal with bee stings, we might want to know that and pay attention to that and consider that in terms of where we, where we locate things. Would you agree those are the kinds of things we'd want to pay attention to? So those are some of the things folks that are concerned have told us. And then the questions that people ask. I think the number one question that I've heard people ask is, "Can we enforce this, right? Can we actually enforce this? Do we have enough capacity that if we allow for this, will people do it well and can we enforce?" And then the answer to that is yes. So therefore, we're thinking, because we've had some time, to build some capacity to allow for that. So the Animal Care and Control Department has adequate resources. And you'll see in a minute when we start talking about what we've learned over the last few years with this. So that's one of the questions people ask. They also ask, "What happens to the animals if people don't keep them?" Like, "I decided I liked the idea. It looked good. It was cool. But then I changed my mind. It was like, okay, now what?" So there's places for those animals to be adopted. The Humane Society will adopt them. Our Animal Care and Control will help with that process. If there's something happens with some kind of disease, M.D.A.R. is who we alert. That's what happens already, period, in the country. We gonna fall right on the line with, with those processes. They already exist. When it's legal here, then we'll follow those same practices. So those are some of the things that people were concerned about and some of the questions that they asked. And know that the ordinance is not already done. These conversations continue to inform what the ordinance could look like. So please, please, please bring your voice into the conversation today. You know, whatever it is that's concerning you, if you don't hear an answer to it, by all means, please just let us know whether you verbalize it out loud or if you put it, we got an activity coming up in a minute. You'll have a chance, or if you put it on the board. You know, don't leave an unanswered question and walk out the door with it. Let us know what's going on, because that's how we keep this process moving forward. So Kamani's gonna talk to you about what it looks like so far in the draft of the ordinance based upon the inputs that we've received from all the stakeholders thus far.
And so here we're gonna go into Chapter 50 and Chapter 6 of the city code. So those are the two chapters of city code that would need to be amended in order to allow for animal keeping in the city of Detroit. Chapter 50 is essentially the zoning ordinance. So zoning, we're gonna talk a little bit about that. And then animal control is where all of the meat and potatoes about how animals are kept, how they're kept safely, how they're sheltered, and all of those things. That's where all of that content and language would be. And so, here we go. And so what is zoning? Zoning, in its most simplistic form, the way, the best way to explain it is it's simply the rules for what you can or cannot do with your property. So how many people is affected by zoning in here? By show of hands. Almost everybody raised their hands. If everybody raises their hands, then we will be on the money because zoning impacts everybody, whether you rent, whether you own, no matter what you, where you are, you're impacted by zoning because it tells you where residential could go. So on this map, this is an example that residential goes in the yellow areas. Or retail, it goes in the red areas, the B4 general business district. Or industrial, it can go in the green or other M3 areas. So this is just an example to show you how zoning impacts everybody in the city. And here, these are the zoning districts that are being proposed of where animals will be able to be kept. So we're talking about residential districts, business zoning districts, even industrial zoning districts, because sometimes there's homes, even in areas that are zoned industrial. The public center, district, public center adjacent, and so on and so forth. The mixed-use districts, which are the SD1, SD2, and SD4. Then also the parks and recreation, because we have some farms on city parkland. And then also the newly created MKT district, which is largely in Eastern Market area. And so when we talk about eligibility, who would be eligible to keep animals? Keep these animals we've been discussing. So these are the five places where you would be eligible to possibly keep animals. And those are if you have a residence, if you already have agricultural use, like an urban garden or farm, if you have a school, if you have an educational institution other than, you know, like an elementary school, and then also if you have like a sit-down restaurant. Those will be the qualifiers where you will be eligible to keep animals. And so when we talk about keeping animals, it's essential to know that we're talking about keeping animals as an accessory use, meaning there's already a primary use on that land. So either you have a school, you have a house, you have something else on that land. So we're not just talking about chickens being the only use of that land or bees being the only use of that land. You already have something established there, and now the animal keeping is secondary to that principal use that you already have established. And then there's another track that we can go down. And this is what I talked about earlier, a special track where somebody might want to do an equestrian center that I mentioned. And those are for forage programs, such as like MSU has forage programs, or educational nonprofit. And so if you are one of those, you will have the opportunity to establish, through a special land use hearing, meaning you have to go to the Buildings and Safety Engineering Department and have a public hearing in order to establish that. And you will have the opportunity to propose a special use, such as horses or something. And we would need to know, and we will look at a number of factors to make sure that it's the appropriate place with the appropriate amount of land and all of the things that you would need for that to be successful, that it's far enough from residences where it's not going to impact their quality of life and things of that nature. And then the second thing you would need to know, once you know that you qualify as under one of these, then you would just need to get a license. And so if you get a license, that would allow you to keep animals. So when we talk about the safety of our neighbors, we're looking at how we can keep animals safely without impacting the quality of life of our neighbors. And so in zoning, there's something called setbacks, meaning how far something has to be set back or set away from the thing that we're trying to push it away from. And so here, we're saying that if you want to keep chickens or ducks, there has to be a 30-foot setback away from your neighbor's home so that the ducks are not sitting right on top of the property line, right, you know, adjacent to your neighbor. They have to be set back a little ways. And I'm gonna show you what that looks like in a little bit. There also has to be five-foot setbacks from the perimeter property line for their shelter space, for their housing, and things of that nature. And then there's also setbacks from the alley. If there's no alley, there has to be setbacks from the rear. And then for honeybees also, there's 25-foot setbacks to make sure that honeybees are not too close to the neighbor's house. And so what does that look like? I know this might be a little blurry up here. Sorry for the visuals. But if your, if your house is in the green and your neighbor's houses are on the blue to the side of you, this is what that would look like once you apply that. So this is your property line, if you see that? This line here would be your property line. This is what the size setbacks would be like, five-foot size setbacks. And this, these would be the 30-foot setbacks here. And then, sorry, my clicker is going crazy. And then, sorry, my clicker is going crazy. But if you see, this yellow area would be where you can actually keep the animals. Once you meet those setbacks, they will have to be to the rear of the property in a isolated space so that they don't impact your neighbors. If you already have an existing garage, that's already existing, the animals will also be able to be kept there as well. And this is the same thing. So when we're talking about honeybees, those setbacks are slightly different. So these red spaces represent the five-foot setbacks from your neighbors, from your property line. And these will represent the beehives, where you see these yellow circles. And this is showing how far they would have to be set back, 25 foot, feet from the property line. However, if you have what we call a fly wall barrier, which we showed earlier in the presentation, which causes, it creates a blockage so that bees can't come into your neighbor's yard, then you might be able to locate them closer, uh, within that 25-foot setback. And lastly, just to touch on some of those provisions that we talked about with the animal care, uh, this just touches on enclosure spaces, uh, how you have to, uh, conduct your food storage, that it has to be secure from vermin and pests. Um, you have to have waste management. And so all of these things are going to be happening through the licensing process. And the good thing about a license is that if it's, something is not being done properly, the next year, that license can be taken, or even if it's an emergency situation, that license can be revoked in emergency situations immediately. And so this is just showing some of the things that you have to complete. Um, you have to have health documentation upon request if there's an issue, if there's an outbreak or something like that. Um, there's telling about what you have to do with deceased animals, uh, how you approach pest and vermin. Um, and then the animals also have to be tagged. So if they get loose, we knows whose animals they are. And then also in the application process, uh, for to get the license, there's an application, there's an annual fee for renewals. Um, you can't have any current violations. Uh, we have procedures for denial. We have procedures, if you're up to be suspended, you can have a hearing to say, to hear what you're being suspended for and make your case against that. And so it's a whole, uh, due process type of process so that you can know what you're being accused of, if your animals are going to be taken, and you can make an argument against that. Lastly, I'll just talk about slaughter. When it comes to slaughter, we've identified regional slaughter facilities. Currently in the city of Detroit, we don't have a slaughter facility today. However, we do know of slaughter facilities within a 30-minute drive that animal keepers are currently using. And some people might say, well, that's a long ways away. Well, just an example, getting from Crowwell Recreation Center to Hillman Recreation Center on the east side, from east to the west, that could take you from 30 to 40 minutes in the city of Detroit. So a 30-minute drive, while it may be far, uh, it's not unheard of in the city of Detroit, getting from one side of the city to the other. And animal keepers are currently using those places to slaughter their animals. And also, we've talked to Eastern Market. So Dan Carmody, uh, the head of Eastern Market, has committed to investing and bringing a multi-species, uh, small-scale slaughter facility for people like this, for people that are keeping animals and need somewhere to take them to get them slaughtered. We all know that Eastern Market would be the perfect place for this. And so Eastern Market is looking and is already working to bring that to the market. And this is probably one of the most important slides. We've worked with Animal Care and Control, um, in their department, and we pulled the data about the violations and the citations that they've given out for animals all across the entire city. And what we found is from 2020 to 2023, so over three years, out of five, over 5,000 violations or citations, only 30, 34 of those were for farm animals. That's pretty interesting, isn't it? Out of over 5,000 citations, only 34 of those were for farm animals, which means people that are currently keeping farm animals and honeybees are doing it very well, because we all know that it's complaint-driven. So if we aren't getting that many complaints and there's only 34 citations, that accounts for less than 1%, we know that we can continue doing this well and doing this good and make it a good thing for the entire city. And that being said, we thank you for your time, and I'm gonna give it over to, uh, Jai Singletary, who's gonna play a video for us, I believe. Let's give it up for Mr. Singletary.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Thank you so much. So I know that was a load, a load, a load, a load of information. So we want to give folks in the audience a ti, it's a time to digest, ask some questions. I'll come around with the microphone, so simply if you have a question, please raise your hand. Please do not be shy. We want to capture any questions, any concerns that you might have as well. Okay, we'll start, if that's okay. I can start right here, the gentleman here, and then I'll come to you in the polo. Do you mind also saying your name?
Hello, my name is Gaston Nogus. I live in Morningside, and I'd like to know a little bit more about the licensing process and application and what does that mean?
Licensing, processing, and application. So I know for only a few more minutes here, I know we have Director Perkins with the General Services Department. Would you mind joining us up here really quickly, please? We can give her a quick round of applause. Thank you, ma'am. So questions around licensing and permitting?
Good afternoon, evening. So with the license and the permitting, you will be required to come into the shelter to fill out a license. Um, once that license has been accepted, someone will have to go onsite to do the permitting. And then everything else can be uploaded, and then the, um, the, the department will look at it and issue the licenses in accordance with the, um, ordinance. What if you already have those animals? I don't know if I would say that, because it's not part of the city ordinance. He knows somebody.
I would just say to that, uh, typically ordinances have an effective date. And so one of the things that we're looking at is a, an effective date. That's not the immediate date that the ordinance is passed, but it's a little further out so that people can then understand, we can do more education, and then you have time to get up to speed on getting the licensing and everything like that.
And while we have Director Per- Perkins, if we may, just talk about enforcement, the world of enforcement, because I'm sure although we might not have hands, I know that's in folks' heads.
Sure. So, um, we will, we currently enforce the, um, Article 6 of the municipal code right now, and that's for, you know, animals that are not, um, allowed to be housed on residential properties. So the enforcement will actually be the same. Um, we will have inspectors go out, especially if we get a complaint, we have our inspectors go out to address the complaint, do a report, write the inspection. They bring that information back to the team, and then we, um, send either animal control officers out to enforce the results of the inspection. So enforcement will remain the same. It's just that, you know, with this new ordinance, it's going to allow for residents and businesses to have a, a more variety of, of the farm animals on their property, but it's also a limited number, too. So we will enforce the ordinance as it is written.
Thank you, ma'am. I had a question over here as well.
Yeah, of course. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Sepulveda. Uh, I'm a resident of East English Village, and I think this is a really great thing that people are considering. Uh, my spouse and I have historically lived in other places where chickens haven't allowed. We've had chickens. We really appreciate them as like clean, accessible, uh, safe, uh, just great animals to have in like an urban environment for a lot of these reasons. I think my question is like, how can we make that more accessible to other folks? A part of the advantage of chickens, right, is to, um, have like accessible meat or eggs. Uh, for a lot of Detroiters, that can be like a challenging thing. Um, so what mechanisms are there going to be to, for example, have, uh, animal resale, uh, if any, so that people can afford to purchase a chicken once they've, uh, been licensed? Because otherwise, you have to go all the way out to probably like Troy or New Baltimore or out towards Ann Arbor to get something, and that can be prohibitive. Uh, and chickens typically are pretty low cost or low maintenance, like once they reach an older stage, too. So there's no reason that folks couldn't raise chickens except for the cost, really.
That was a good question. Uh, pass to Mr. Jeffrey.
So if I understood the question, you said, you mentioned chicken resale? Okay. So I think that's gonna come down to the tagging process. And from our conversations with Animal Care and Control, the tagging is gonna be relatively fluid, where you can change out the tags relatively. It's not a, um, a strenuous process, but it's a process by which the tags can be changed out, because the main goal, from my understanding, and I'll let the director speak, uh, even more on this subject, the main goal is just to geolocate or know where animals are being kept. And so knowing that chickens are gonna be going out to slaughter, you know, every so often, once they get raised, and you're gonna, you know, you may take them to a slaughter house so that you can consume them, knowing that, the, from my understanding, the tagging is gonna be loose enough so that they can be swapped out. So I believe that would be the same case for resale, that you will be able to resale, um, in that same way, but they would have to be tagged and identified during that process. That make sense?
I'll come to you, because whatever you said, I'm sure is important, and we want to make sure everybody hears.
Yeah, the follow-up question was, would an individual be able to resell that animal, assuming that they had the license to have that animal in the first place?
I would say there's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits that. Yeah. As long as animals are, according to the ordinance, as long as they're healthy, um, as long as there's no, you know, safety concerns about the health of the animals, um, and as long as the tagging is being met, there's nothing that would prohibit you from reselling.
All right, we got, I see a couple of questions, Mr.? If we start here, yes, sir?
Thank you, Jai. Uh, my question is, the, the 30-foot setback, is that the only place the animals can be kept, or can they roam and be kept there in the evenings, let's say? And the other part is, how many chickens can I have?
And that's a good que, great question. I believe I had some issues with the slides, because that's one of our slides, if I can bring it back up in, in shortly. But you can have up to eight chickens or ducks. That's currently what's in the ordinance. So if you have a residence, you can have up to eight chickens or ducks. Also, if you have an urban farm or garden, you can have eight chickens or ducks. The maximum is two beehives. And I apologize, because I believe one of those slides got skipped due to the clicker issues, uh, but you can have two beehives, um, on an urban garden or farm, or at your residence, or those other, uh, uses that we listed out. And then your other question was the setbacks, can they roam?
I mean, so the animals?
Right. So to that question, you have to meet the setbacks, and in that diagram that we showed, they can't, uh, they have to be in an enclosed space, so behind, you know, a fence or some sort of, uh, enclosed recreational space or in the shelter. So they wouldn't technically be able to roam according to the ordinance.
Right. And my boss just came, a little, uh, Councilwoman Letitia Johnson is here.
Thank you, sir. I want to go one more behind me. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, my name is Will DeNance, and I think that's a great ideal, because as you think about it, the concept of America was built around agriculture. But now, in keeping these animals and livestock, it does carry an expense. Uh, is there any way that we could come up, you know, providing everything's going well with that person? Grant monies that maybe they can seek out that could help them? This would also help them in terms of keeping those animals healthy and maybe if they need to go to a vet or what have you. Is that a possibility? Because it does carry an expense. But I think it's great. Oh, but I think it's great.
I'm not the... So I, I believe the question is, uh, because of the expense, I believe you said it was a good idea, what you're hearing, but because of the expenses, are there any grant opportunities? I would say, from my knowledge, there aren't any coming from the city currently, but there are places or entities such as the E- Eastern Market Partnership and other, uh, nonprofits or philanthropic arms around the city that may be able to fund those things. So, you know, Eastern Market is doing a lot with the surrounding communities and in the city to fund food initiatives. Um, so I would say those are the opportunities, and probably not so much the city at this point, at least. Unless, we do have elected officials in the room, so if there's something that I may be missing.
And, and keep your eyes out, because there's a lot of, of effort around urban agriculture and livestock as a part of that. So the USDA, EPA, I mean, this is all kinds of movement around urban agriculture and animal agriculture as a part of that. So the money's out there. It doesn't necessarily come from the municipality, from the city.
We have, uh, Member Johnson would like to also provide a response.
So to what Renee just mentioned, um, last week, I believe, I was part of a panel discussion where the Secretary of Agriculture was here with, uh, Congresswoman Stabenow, and there was discussion about USDA dollars, uh, coming to the city of Detroit. There is a facility, an FSA, uh, office that's going to open in the city of Detroit, and so some dollars will be freed up to come to the city very soon.
Thank you, Councilmember. So thank you all for the questions and comments. Please, please, please keep thinking, keep those gears turning. I, I know, I, I got you, Mrs. Hallroff. We're just gonna, we, we're pushing forward, I know. Um, so right now, as, uh, Mr. Jeffrey and Director Perkins and Ms. Wallace have stated, this, this isn't new. This is, uh, a model that's happening nationally. So we want to show a couple of videos, uh, for you all to see what it's like to have beekeeping, to have chickens, to have ducks as well.
Hi, my name is Timothy.
My name is Nicole.
And we're both co-founders of Detroit Hives, a nonprofit firm with C3 whereby we transform vacant lots into thriving bee farms. I never was into bees, and Nicole was always afraid of bees as well. But it wasn't until we learned about local raw honey that brought us to learn more about how bees made honey, that we got interested in, in bees and honeybees.
We're all about the conservation of honeybees, because they help, uh, pollinate our, pollinate our foods and vegetables. They're responsible for one-third of our food source. Um, so we want to conserve those honeybees so we can be here as well. See all types of things here in Detroit. We love educating everyone from...
Children, tourists, travelers, local schools, businesses, you name it. We love getting them here to learn all about apiology, putting on those suits.
Putting on beekeeping suits.
Holding the frame, seeing how honeybees make honey.
Yeah, getting up and close and personal with honeybees.
It's a grow because all these girls go out and they're wasting it.
So it's a great experience for people to learn and connect, um, with honeybees. And one great thing about it is that he's here in the city of Detroit.
Now we have a newfound passion into beekeeping and urban revitalization.
And studying about bees has brought us even closer together.
Okay, so I'm actually inside my chicken coop right now, and I have a pretty big chicken coop as far as urban chicken coops go. So I'm just gonna tell you what my guidelines are and what I teach in my chicken keeping classes, as far as how much space you need per chicken. So a good rule of thumb is four square feet per standard-sized chicken inside the chicken coop. Now, if you have a chicken run where the chickens have lots of covered space, or they have many areas where they can get out of the elements, then you might be able to get away with a little bit less space in your chicken coop. I actually used to have a big covered run, and I don't have that now, but my coop is much bigger now. When I had my big covered run, my coop was very... But my coop is much bigger now. When I had my big covered run, my coop was very small. I had an omelet egg-lou coop, and it was adorable and a great coop. I needed more space inside the coop, so that they would have a place to go to get away from the elements.
I'm trying to follow the ducks around, so that you can see how cute they are. They're Indian runner ducks. And I decided on the runner ducks because of their size and their egg production. But I am so glad that I did. They are so cute. They're busy. They're looking for slugs and worms. Their favorite thing to eat. They don't like me following them around either. Oh, dear. On the little farm, I talk a lot about research and trying to make sure that the animals are a good fit if you decide that you want to put some animals on your property. And that's exactly where I started with the ducks. I decided I wanted to have ducks, because in the wintertime, the chicken/egg production probably goes to almost zero to maybe one egg a day, or one day egg a week. And I wanted to make sure that we were getting our eggs fresh and homegrown. And so the alternative to placing lights in the chicken coop all night long to make the chickens think that there's more daylight, the alternative to that was getting some ducks. And I researched and researched, you've heard this before, it's the same old song here with Ms. Annette, "Research your animals before you decide to purchase them." And I did. And I didn't see any downfalls to ducks at the time. Because initially, I thought, oh, well, we don't have enough space to build a pond, and what can we do? And then I, I saw that you could put a pool out for them, and all of this, and I figured it out. We had enough space.
Alright, now that we've seen again ducks, chickens, and honeybees, let's bring it back home. So if I can invite two special guests today, Mr. Timothy Jackson and Mr. Mark Covington, if you wouldn't mind joining me at the presenter's table. If we can give them a warm round of applause, please. Thank you both, thank you both. And as, as they come up to the front, I know some things that I've been thinking about, we've been talking about as an office, is cost. What's it like to live next to ducks, chickens, and honeybees? So, uh, these gentlemen are going to tell us a little bit about their experience in the city of Detroit. So first, uh, to my left should not be a stranger, who's featured just moments ago, Mr. Timothy Jackson, who serves as the co-executive director for Detroit Hives, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, working to improve communities for people and pollinators by transforming vacant lots into educational green spaces. It's founded in 2016, and Detroit Hives now exists in over twenty-five locations, including the Brightmore, oh, Ms. Pilsen, uh, good timing, and Ms. Pilsen, uh, Brightmore Pollinator Habitat, and the Michigan State Sites, both which are located in District One. And if I may, Ms. Pilsen, how are you, ma'am? That is okay, that is okay. This is perfect timing. Ms. Pilsen, Ms. Tiffany Pilsen is also a lifelong resident of the city of Detroit, and a product of the Detroit Public School System. She grew up between downtown and the east side of the city, where appropriately in. And she currently owns ten parcels in District One, and is farming approximately 5.5 of those parcels. And she began farming and keeping chickens, because she noticed the need for fresh, healthy food choices in her community, and because of the lack of access to grocery stores. And last but not least, we have Mr. Mark Covington, who was a lifelong resident of the city of Detroit, and a city airport, uh, in the city airport neighborhood on the city's east side. And Mr. Covington has been a beekeeper for ten years, a chicken keeper for fourteen years. He's also the founder of the Georgia Street Garden and Farm, and founder and president, you got a lot of titles there, sir, and the director of the Georgia Street Collective, which provides residents with health, education, leadership skills, protection, and rebuilding the sustaining community. If we can just do one more round of applause while we're up here, we thank them so much for their time. So first and foremost, something I cannot and will not ignore, so furry friends at my feet. So we were fortunate enough to have chickens inside today. So if I can ask Ms. Pilsen, Mr. Covington, they're here. What's it like day-to-day having chickens, uh, on, on your land? Can you talk about feeding them, what it's like in the winter, what it's like in the summer? Are they loud, are they quiet? Just what's it like to have these furry friends with you?
Having chickens is, uh, pretty cool. Uh, my chickens are cool like me. Uh, they really have taken on my personality. They're very laid back. They survive outside in the summer. I, I built a homemade chicken coop with some help, uh, from some friends of mine. Um, and in the winter, I just kinda cover it up. They're, uh, very easy to take care of, and they are extremely surprisingly intelligent. They, um, they communicate in their own way. I've learned, you know, like, um, when they're trying to talk to me, and, um, they're very productive. Um, and, uh, we need them. Because of the lack of the access to food, ever since Farmer Jack closed down in the city of Detroit, we, we need their eggs, and we need their meat. And if no one else is gonna do it for us, we have to do it.
Well said. Mr. Covington, if there's anything you'd like to add?
My chickens, to me, are like my dogs. I love my dogs. I love my dogs, and I love my chickens. In the wintertime, though, they, they actually do better in the wintertime than they do in the summertime, because of their respiratory systems. Um, the heat bothers them when they breathe. So, uh, I've never had a chicken, to this day, die in the wintertime, always in the summertime. And it's because, uh, they, you have to make sure they have water to wet down their respiratory system, so they can stay wet and, um, not dry out. But, um, they don't make a lot of noise. I don't think anybody heard them so far today. Even roosters, I've had roosters in the past. We had a rooster that died, and when the neighbors didn't hear the rooster anymore, they came running, telling me what happened to the rooster. And I was like, I got rid of him. And they was like, why? I, I thought he was too loud, and, but they were like, they enjoyed it, so.
Thank you both. I wanna pivot now to talk a little bit about bees, if I may. Can I hold some of these up? Because I know some folks probably can't see them. So at my feet, too, I have a bee hive. I see gloves. I see a brush. I'm not sure what this is, but we're gonna learn about it in a second. Mr. Jackson, smoker, I'm holding a smoker. Mr. Jackson, can you tell us a little bit about what I'm holding, what's at my feet, and how much these things cost? What's it like to maintain them as well?
No problem. Um, what you're holding in your hand is a smoker tool, and it does three things. What we like to use a smoker tool is, we like to season our smoker tool, like most of us season our food. So we season our smoker tool with dried lavender, dried basil, thyme, oregano, things of that nature. And the reason why we season it is that when you light it on fire, it releases a smoke. That smoke now serves as aromatherapy. Honeybees, their nose receptors are a hundred times stronger than ours. They can smell the sweet nectar from flowers miles away. So when we're inspecting or going inside our bee hives, we gently smoke our hives to make them calm through aromatherapy. But there are other things a smoker tool does. Um, there are guard bees inside the hive, very similar to like guard dogs. And guard bees, their job is to protect the entry of their hive from any type of intruder, beekeeper, any type of predator. In this case, what they do is begin to communicate through a pheromone, through a scent that smells similar to bananas. They begin to stick their bottoms into the air, and they fan around the scent. This communicates with other guard bees to be a little bit more alert, or more into, uh, protecting their colony. We disrupt their communication by using that smoker tool to mask off the whoopee banana smell. Two is that honeybees, they've been around for over millions of years. And, um, in their DNA, they witnessed many forest fires. So a lot of times, with some beekeepers, maybe use paper, or sticks or twigs, it sometimes smell like their home is on fire. And they begin to eat so much honey, as their, you know, as a survivor tactic, that their blades are so full and so enlarged, that they're barely able to sting you. And that's why a lot of people use the smoker tool. But a smoker tool is a necessary tool in beekeeping. Uh, the more advanced you get, some people don't really use it so often. Uh, when you're going inside your hives, depending on what time of day, most of the bees are busy working, that you really don't have to use it so often. But it's really good tool to have, especially for beginner beekeepers. You can get a, a smoker tool relatively for like around eighteen, maybe twenty, twenty-three bucks, or something like that. It's always best to buy from local beekeepers. But if you can't find a local beekeeper to buy that from, you can simply buy it on Amazon.
And then, just really quickly, how about the hive? How mu- how much does that cost? How much can they range? That'd be a better question.
The hive that you're looking at is called a Langstroh hive. It's the most common bee hives that we use today. Although it was invented in eighteen fifty-one by Reverend Lorenzo Lorraine Langstroh, we still use them today for the revolution design of having vertical, I'm sorry, removable frames. You can pull them right out and put them right back in. What's unique about those hives is that it supports bee space. You know, you're able to manage the amount of comb that they build, and just maybe to do a lot more, with more inspection. Um, that typical box, I would say, if you get it brand-new, the bare bones cost can be somewhere around three hundred dollars. Bare bones cost. But the more boxes and the more frames that you put inside of it, begins to add in cost. It can go as small as a five-frame nuke to an eight-frame nuke, I'm sorry, a five-frame nuke to an eight, eight-frame hive box to a ten-frame hive box. And it can weigh, when their bees are really active in there and building their honey, one hive box can weigh about three to four hundred pounds.
Alright, thank you, thank you. And I know, this is just one final question that I've been thinking about. Actually, Mr. Jackson, your video prompted it, is youth, and youth interaction with bees, ducks, and chickens. Can the three of you talk about the benefits that you've seen from young folks? Doesn't have to be, you know, three, four, five, maybe teenagers, giving something to do in the summer, springtime, to stay active, and also be exposed to something that a lot of folks don't associate with Detroit.
Well, when I first started keeping chickens, it was because I wanted to poop for the, for, uh, the compost that I was growing, the fruits and vegetables. Um, but then, when I, when we started working with youth, I kept trying to think of ways for, you know, to keep them involved. And, um, I'd got my first chickens in the mail, baby chicks, and a couple of the kids saw them. And like, and these were like some of the toughest kids that I've probably worked with all, all these years. And they, it was like they melted, you know, and it was like it was something that they wanted to take care of. They started naming them, you know, but it was, it was a way for keeping them and getting them involved with the garden.
The, the kids love the chickens. It's so unusual for them. I have a four-year-old niece and a fifteen-year-old nephew. And when I first got my chickens, my niece was two, and we didn't know she could talk. And, um, um, I brought the box over with the chicks in it, and we opened it up. And the little girl, she said, "Oh, my God." And so we all were looking like, "Oh, the little girl can talk." She hadn't, she hadn't said anything prior to seeing those baby chicks, literally. So, um, the engagement and everything, um, from the kids is amazing. And, uh, I believe the benefits from not just the chickens, from just the farming environment, uh, period, has positive long-term effects that we may never even be able to put our fingers on.
For us, it's, it's about creating spaces, not only for people, but for pollinators. Michigan is already home to four hundred and sixty-seven different types of native bees. We encounter different types of insects all around us. It's inevitable. You know, you're gonna run into something. So we have this, a lot of times, we're raised, even myself was raised to think that insects are pests. That we see a bug, we have to step on it or squash it. That it's not welcome into our environment. So part of our mission is to, how do we create a community for, again, people and pollinators? And we do that by creating tours. Detroit Hives, although it's been founded in 2016, we've been able to host well over a thousand tours here in the city of Detroit. And no one has ever been stung in any of our tours. We work with other community partners, um, universities, even, uh, local schools. Like we helped hives at Monford High School and Wayne City University. There's been no complaints with anybody having issues with that. So when you create these spaces for people and pollinators, there lies an opportunity to educate, because you're gonna have those questions. What do bees do, or what's the difference between bees and wasps? And that's a great way to create what's called outdoor learning experiences. And then lastly, through our Be the Change program, we've been able to educate hundreds of inner-city youth on beekeeping, conservation, and environmental initiatives as well.
So, here's a question for you. And it's amazing what you guys are talking about, and what you've done, and your love, and your consideration for this. We know that everything is not for everybody, right? So who should not be doing this? Who should not be considering keeping chickens, ducks, and bees? What are things that people should be thinking about? Like, if you heard this, then you probably don't wanna do that. Who might not be considering this? Because we know everything is not for everybody. Is that true? Everything's not for everybody, okay? So tell us a little bit about what people should be thinking about, and why they might not wanna do this.
It's work. Um, it takes work and dedication. And I don't know about these guys, but no one that knows me would have ever thought that I'd have chickens, or grow any type of food, any, anything. So, everything is not for everybody, but something can, um, develop in you if you have a passion to do it, and you can change, like I have. But it is work. It, it may be peaceful work, it may be beneficial work. Um, but if you, if you don't wanna put the work in, and the time and everything that it takes to properly take care of these animals, then, then you shouldn't do it, because it's not right for the animals, or, or for the environment and your neighbors.
Ditto. I would also say that, you know, find your true why. There are a lot of similar projects here, whether it's with bees, with livestock, but find what's your true why. Find something that you wanna give back to yourself or to your community. You know, a lot of times, people take similar projects, and then, once again, when they take on that commitment, they learn that it's a real strong commitment. Like, for example, keeping bees is just like sometimes keeping children. They all have different individual personalities. They get to recognize your face, your voice, your scent, which sounds really cool, but there's also the good, the bad, and the ugly with keeping, with bees. It's a, it's a work of art. It's a, it's a lot of work to be done with as well. But like was mentioned earlier, it's the passion and the purpose that keeps you going as well. So I would say those that maybe have a lot of workload, maybe allowing their plate, I'm just letting you know that keeping bees is gonna add to that as well.
Do you know what? I, I see we have questions. We just wanna, we wanna get to the activity next, where, where we're working at tables. Um, so if, if it's okay, and the tables, if they can float around and ask individual questions. Other way around, they're gonna, if they, they'll come to you, because they'll join tables. We're gonna get interactive. We're gonna get active. So this, this was not the last, um, stage for asking questions. We're gonna, we're gonna get some of that thought partnership at the table. So if you wouldn't mind just joining me, giving Mr. Jackson, Ms. Pilsen, Mr. Covington a round of applause. And now, I'd like to pass it to Ms. Wallace for our next-
Alrighty, so yes, more questions, right? So at your tables, we're gonna put, you'll see some large sheets being added to your table. And this is where you can have some conversation with the people who are at your table, or some people maybe at another table that you wanna hang out with. Uh, so we've asked, what do you think should be allowed? And so one of the sheets, uh, talks about, uh, what should be allowed, and concerns you might have about what should be in the policy. And then the other is, if you have concerns, what are those concerns? So you're gonna see some post-its, you're gonna have some markers, and we invite you to have some conversation at the table. And those questions and concerns that you have, we're gonna bring them back to the big group. We wanna make sure we give you some time to do some individual work. If you're sitting at a table by yourself, or less than three or four people, we'd invite you to join a table. Alrighty, so would you like to join? Hi, good to see you. Would you like to join one of the other tables? So you're not by yourself, but she's with the, yeah. So how about, so there's a table here. There's a whole bunch of ladies right behind you, right there. You could join that table. There's a bunch of farmers up here. So maybe just find a spot to hang out in. And we're gonna give you about ten minutes or so, and then we wanna hear back from you, okay? So I'll take this one. Do they have, so you can spread that out. You can spread that out. Amy, would you put those in the middle? Hey, Amy, you wanna put these in the middle? You can separate them. There's two. You can separate them, there's two. Is everybody good? Got what you need? Okay. Stick them on here. You want to write directly on it, help yourself, but do the posters if you can. Okay. So, do you want to join another table? Michelle, where are you hanging out at? This table here? Okay, let's spread these out.
I'll just make sure.
You guys good over here?
Yep, I'll come your way.
Okay. Alright.
I'm thinking like twenty more minutes, like ten of this, five of this. Because it's, you know, we're already at that, that hour. I know some people already faded out, so. How many still online? Like twenty? Sixteen, alright. Twenty-three? Total, okay, not bad. We're only seven short from last time. I'm gonna tell Ms. Wallace that we'll try to do, like, wrap everything up in like twenty minutes. Because we're already at seven thirty.
I'm with you. I'm with you. Oh, no, I was, I was, I didn't want to cut you off. I just, we, I was.
Talk to his other hand.
We're still hovering that. Eight o'clock, and I know people got families, or if they don't have family, birthdays. And I don't want to hold y'all up for it. Thank you both again.
Thank you both again, thank you, thank you. We'll stay in touch. I'll, I'll text you about some of those contractors.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then the established uses for the property then? So do you have to, like, so then, do I have to?
So, okay, so what that means is that, so you have your house, right?
Is there a lot of popcorn on there?
Uh, we had twenty-five on line. Yeah, twenty-five. So like, right now, they're like sixteen, yeah, twenty-five, yeah.
I told Anwai, he's still in Houston.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, great, great. Yeah, I think here, we topped at twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
So it's all about being accessory to another use. That's how we figure it out. But even if the people don't show up, tell them what these assets are. Because if they haven't, even if they don't have it, they want to come here themselves, and they're here. Excuse me, I'm coaching, you're here. So then just take them to that truck. Okay, any other questions? Do you think they might want to know?
Michigan State. Thank you guys for doing this. The reason I got involved with all this is because I got blessed with my chickens, trying to do the nice thing, animal control. And I'm out there with my birds, working on the garden.
And it's the plant, yeah. I said, forget that.
I'm saying this for our social media, if that's okay, in the end. Just, just folks interacting. Okay, well, I can delete it. I respect it.
Because a lot of people were, a lot of people were taking pictures and doing all kind of stuff.
Yeah, I just, I just deleted them, they're gone.
Thank you.
Alright, folks, if we do a two-minute warning, two-minute reminder. We can get those final thoughts down.
How you guys doing? Ooh, I see stickies. Make me happy. Okay. Alright, you guys. Alright, we got about another minute. Jai, we got about another minute, is that right? So we got one more minute, one more. Alright, we want to invite you to start to gather your thoughts. So, we want you to start to gather your thoughts, and we want to hear out from you, from all this great conversation that's going on. Okay, so where should I go first? Alright, can everybody hear me okay? Is everybody hearing me okay? Do I need to use my reel outside? Or should I whisper? Maybe if I whisper. Alright, so here's what we're gonna do. Everybody, can everybody hear me? I think they can hear me, they're probably not listening, though. Just messing with you. There's two different things, yes it is. Alright, so I'm gonna invite you all to join me. Can I invite everybody to come back to the conversation with me? Come back to the conversation with me? Come back, come back? Okay, so thank you very much, first of all, for taking the time to share and talk with one another. So one of the first things we want to hear, because this is gonna really heavily inform what we're doing, is what concerns? What concerns do you still have? So I'm gonna kind of walk around a little bit and just invite you to share with me what concerns that you have. Because you had the opportunity to talk about what's allowed. You also had the opportunity to talk about what you're concerned about. Good to see you again today, thank you. But my concern is, I really would like to hear from animal control themselves. Do we really have enough law enforcement to actually enforce an ordinance? If it gets passed, okay? Because I'm gonna be honest, I'm not convinced yet. And as I was sharing with Amy, you know, made a call to animal control about a dog being out in the hot heat. Did they show up? I know, we only have a few, but they did not. And so my mind was just thinking in the same room, as the increase of adding more animals, and we had a big number of a whole total with the dogs, small percentage fires dealing with life, can we, do we have enough officers to address those things? And the second question was, environmento. I'd like to hear from them about runoff. You gave a good presentation of a little bit dealing with the manure.
Yes.
Kimani was telling me about, you know, compost and that, that. But I want to know what effect that has on our, our environment on the ground, too. And this is the last thing, and it has somewhat to do, and I shared it with Amy, home value. My, my daughter lives in Lansing, just bought a home. And I asked her, did the realtor let you know that the neighbors in back had chickens? They didn't know. So now here it is, summertime, and you got, she has two dogs, and they're running at the fence, you know? They're getting used to it. So, it has effect on dogs, too, because as I was saying with Amy, I have dogs. I have five grand dogs, one granddaughter, love them both, love them. But every time, if either of my neighbor's animals get loose, we had to put up a higher fence, we put up the fence, okay? Because we didn't want to see their animals hurt. So those are my concerns. I'm not convinced yet. Okay. And thank you so much. I hope everybody could hear. So, one of the concerns was, are we, do we have enough capacity for enforcement? So we want to make sure we revisit that, you know, with animal control. One of the other questions had to deal with the environmental aspects. What are the impacts that have in the chickens and animals can have, you know, on us environmentally? And then last but not least, is the effect of the properties near adjacent. So, what kind of effects? So we can take a look at some of the research, because people have been doing this around the country, and find out some information around, information on if there's been an impact on, on property values. So those were the three, those were the three questions. I got those? Okay, alright, other concerns? Did I see other hands? Other concerns came up at your tables? Because we want to make sure that we address these, because we want the policy to be as informative as, as we can make it. You know, we've been researching, and as things come up. Any other concerns? I'm gonna do like we do in church now. Our hearts clear on concerns before we go on. Okay, here's one more, okay, here we go.
Oh, I'm loud. It's, it's really not a concern, but I'd like to see individuals work with Councilwoman Johnson in terms of securing grants. Now, when you secure grants, you can hire people to make sure that those jobs are done. When you secure grants, we can embed or further the research. But I think there's a lot of environmental factors in having these animals, because I'm an animal lover myself. And so if we can get behind each other, stress our concerns, and secure some type of grant money, not loans, I think all these factors.
Okay, so one other, if everybody didn't hear it, was let's, let's find where the money is to help support getting this done well. Because you may need help getting it done. You may need help, we talked about the cost of things. So making sure we take a look at what kind of financial resources are available to support this. Okay, so any other concerns in the room? Because we made, we saw a lot of cool stuff around what you all thought was should be allowed, and we got that, but we do want to make sure we, did you have anyone? Yes. Piggyback on our friend right here, because she's talking about the resources. So I'm a state representative, Stephanie Young, over in House District Sixteen, with Councilmember President Pro Tem James Tate. And right now, we have in our budget, we just approved eighty-one point seven billion-dollar budget. And within that, ninety-two point seven million is going to agriculture and rural development. And so, this is what you guys need to know. I happen to sit on the House Standing Committee for Agriculture. I'm the only person from Detroit that's been on that committee in a month, number of years, from southeast Michigan. So I'm there to be certain that they know about this work that we're doing and to prayerfully find a way to get this money back to us. But I just gotta, you know, that's why I'm here. I gotta know what we're doing, so I can go back and I can say, "Look, this needs to be funded, and this is why." So when she asked that question, "How are we gonna get these resources?", there's money on the table. I just kind of want you guys to know that. But keep up the good work. This has been such an enlightening, enlightening, and exciting meeting. Thank you all. Thank you, y'all heard her say, "Keep the money on the table," right here. Okay, well, great. So again, we just want to thank you all for your time. Just as you heard, we listened to all the concerns, as well as the inputs from the previous meeting. We're doing likewise with each one of these meetings. Today, we want to make sure we spend some time on any concerns that you have. Did you have one more comment, Dan?
No, no, no.
Okay, we're gonna take one more comment, then we're gonna.
I'm very optimistic, so I don't have any concerns. But I think another great thing about this program is the biggest push right now, it will meet the social, emotional, mental, and physical needs of people. To me, that is important.
Okay, everybody got that. It affects us. Okay, alright, I'm gonna give it, do we have anybody? Do we have anybody online that had a concern? Okay, we want to check in on that. So again, if you guys would just take a moment and just give yourselves some love and some recognition for your contributions tonight because you now have contributed to this moving forward. Everyone? Alright, cool beans, thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you again, Ms. Wallace. I don't have much more to say if I can just invite two council members to close us out. Councilmember Pro, or Council President Pro Tem Tate and Councilmember Johnson, if you wouldn't mind just to close us out for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Jai. Singletary, y'all, give it up for the team. Putting this together. This was not a lot, this is not easy. It's a lot of work, a lot of behind-the-scenes. Give it up for Media Services as well, always coming through. We appreciate you for being here. And I will say this. It's always great to have a room full of folks who, for the most part, support. Especially as the person who's sponsoring the ordinance. But we need to ensure that we talk to some of our neighbors who are not supportive. So they have the correct information. And if they still aren't supportive, then, you know, everyone has a right to their own opinion. Everyone, if you're a taxpayer, you pay your taxes. You can agree, not agree. But at least they will have the proper information and it will make an informed decision whether they agree or don't agree. I just, again, thank you all for being here this evening. And the last voice you're going to hear is District Councilman... Oh, she got her own mic. I told you. This is, this is, right, right? And y'all, give it up again for State Reps, Stephanie Young. Give it up. This is my state rep. Look, she came all the way from District 1 over here. Clearly, clearly, she is engaged. So we appreciate you so much. We love you for the work that you do. God bless you, sister.
Thank you so much, Pro Tem. You all, give it up for Pro Tem and his entire team for being here. Thank you so much for coming to the east side. Listen, I know so many neighbors that already have some animals, some livestock in the neighborhood. And so I appreciate you bringing this here to our district. I have several neighbors, I didn't know Gaston was going to share with you all. But I do know a number of people, and we have a lot of farms in District 4 that are asking for some additional support. And so I think this is great. I'm glad you all came out. We will make sure we continue the conversation going so that if there are any questions or concerns, we can make sure that we bring those to you. Just to make sure that we strengthen the ordinance. But again, thank you so much. I appreciate you being here. Always happy to support your efforts. I know that you do a tremendous job with getting out in the community and engaging community. That is something that I'm very big on. So, again, I see several community leaders that are here. Make sure you all share this information within your community so that residents are aware. I think it can be extremely beneficial. I just recently saw something. I was watching a farm, a farm handler bringing in chickens and getting the eggs and all of that. And I love you all for doing it. I want to come and buy some eggs from you. And thank you for coming to the east side and sharing with us. Yes. I went to high school with Mark Covington and know the great work that he does as well. So, so glad that this is something that's being introduced. And Kimani, you all have done a phenomenal job. And thank you for sharing with me because this was my first time hearing about the ordinance. And so we will continue to move it forward. And of course, if you all have any questions of our office relative to the ordinance, please make sure you reach out to us. Gary has been sharing his card and information with everyone. So again, we are not going to keep you longer. Have a great evening and thank you all so much for coming out.
Thank you all for being here. We will have a third workshop that's coming up in southwest Detroit. Be on the lookout. We will let you know the date and the location. God bless. Everyone be safe and be well going home.